Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission, Regular Commission Meeting for Tuesday, August 4th. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call our meeting to order. Just remind everybody, set your cell phone to stun or silent, and we have meeting documents next to Commissioner Hyburger with all the reports that are mentioned, so if anybody wants access to those records, they are public and sitting right there on the end. And if anybody needs a listening device, Craig and Carol are wandering around, just kind of wave your hand or get their attention and they can help you out. Alrighty. Need a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the July 28th, 2020 Commission Meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And then we also had a joint meeting with the Sioux Falls City Council in Minnehaha County on the same day, July 28th. I need a motion to approve those bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Signify by saying aye, your approval.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We have before us bills to be paid in the amount of $2,128,675.85.
Pay the bills.
Second. Any motion and a second? Any discussion? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't bring my notes with me, but I know that today we have a bill for J.E. Dunn, one of the construction companies working on our jail, and it's the last big bill from that project we're going to get from the construction people. That bill was $1,491,280. We also have $192,000, which went to Metro Communications, 911. Anyway, we're getting to the end of the jail.
Big part of the bills, yes, sir. No other discussion? Signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Reports that were filed from the Juvenile Detention Center, report for June of 2020, and the second quarter report for June of 2020, they are both on the end of the dais over here.
Commissioner Karski.
Jamie Gravitt from JDC is here with staff from USD to discuss the juvenile detention reports, and then I have a comment on another report, too.
Okay. Welcome, Jamie.
As you may have noticed that, oh, I'm sorry, Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center, you may have noticed over the last few months that the reports have changed a little bit, and they're much more professional-looking report that you're getting. I just wanted to give you a few takeaways from the quarter report, and then also Erin is here. I want to give her an opportunity to introduce her team that do these reports for us, so. In the intake call section, it shows that we're down from 2019 for the same quarter. I believe some of that is due to the COVID-19. However, we've been in full operation the whole time through COVID-19. We've been able to keep court going in the juvenile justice system, not only in Minnehaha County, but also throughout all our partner counties, and so there hasn't been much of a change there. So we'll see how that trends out for the rest of the year. 2019 was a busy year for mental health holds. This year, we're down by five to this point in the year, so hopefully that's a trend that continues, that we don't continue to see those happening. The top five categories for intake calls were, number one was abuse and neglect during that quarter, which is not surprising, considering when people tend to be cooped up in their houses together, we start seeing more domestic violence than A&amp;N-type cases, so. And then the next five levels are all felony offenses, felony person, felony property, felony drugs, stuff like that. So. The report's a little misleading, and I think I need to explain it when it talks about non-secure. We really haven't had a non-secure portion of JDC since March due to COVID-19. We made that section-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, the audio is not getting through from Jamie. He needs to-
Can I step a little closer?
I'm sorry. The non-secure is a little misleading because since March, when COVID hit, we really haven't had a non-secure. We made that secure, moved our girls up into that section, and the wing that we use for the girls' section is now our quarantine section. So that's, we really don't have a non-secure at this time, so. Those were the main takeaways that I thought I should share with you today. Now I'd like to have Erin step up so she can introduce her team that does these reports for us.
Welcome, Erin.
Good morning. Erin Serska, Community Project Director, USD. Thank you for having us here today. We've worked really hard as a team with JDC and Jamie to upgrade the reports and get you more data that you need, and it's continuing to work on to meet the needs of the county and JDC. I'd like to introduce to you two of the team members that kind of take lead on this report and this data. We have Dr. Bridget Diamond Welch. She's our research scientist, and then Claire Pierce-Gala, and she's our research associate, too, taking lead on this stuff. She'll be, and you'll be seeing them doing other data projects with you guys as well.
Welcome. Commissioner Hyburger?
You know, we're very fortunate. I think when I started this job over 11 years ago, we didn't have any data analysis people for anything, and now that as things have changed nationally and worldwide, that data is more important, and we have very professional, educated people doing data for us, and we do have data-driven decisions, and not just juvenile detention center, but in everything we do now. It's just really changed. The world has really changed on how we look at things, and I welcome you ladies to our team because they have a ton of experience, and if you looked into what their background, you'd go, wow, we are so lucky and so fortunate to have these gals that really, really, really understand what to put together for us for data. So, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Questions, comments for Jamie? Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Jamie. And data is important, but having the people that know how to interpret it so we can make good use of it is critical, so, thank you. Alrighty. We will move on, then, to personnel actions. Carrie Dever, welcome.
Good morning. Dever from Human Resources. The first request I have for you is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved. Second. A motion and a second to approve routine personnel actions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve, same.
The next item is we'd like to recognize significant employee anniversaries for August 2020. Somewhat shortlist for you today. We have Cody Lowe and Patrick Kaiser, both of whom are deputy sheriffs in the sheriff's office, celebrating five years of service. We have Kristi Dembali, Safe Home Program Worker in Human Services, also celebrating five years of service. Cindy Jepson, an accountant at the auditor's office. Carol Muller, the commission administrative officer, and Nathan Croce, a juvenile correctional officer, too. Cindy and Carol are celebrating 10 years of service, and Nathan is celebrating 20.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
You know, did Carol just, like, leave in order not to have to say anything?
Yes. Say a few words. And the next item I have for you is-
Our volunteers.
Our volunteers. Right. So, in another good month, I'm always pleased when this number is over 250 people. We've got 263 people helping us out in 12 different areas of the county now.
A lot of great people helping out, and just committed people, you bet. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We have some abatements for approval. Chris Lill, there's Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Lill, equalization. Yeah, before you today, I've got one parcel, 35328. It's for abatements for the veterans exemption for 2018. It's only one month in the 2018 and 2019. As you recall, we'd already previously approved these abatements, and we discovered there were some tax certificates on these properties that needed to be resolved prior, so we had to rescind that abatement. Those tax certificates have been taken care of, and now we're pushing these back through to keep the paper trail clean. For the 2018 year, we're requesting $98. Again, it was just for one month of 2018. For the 2019 year, it's an amount of $1,033.10, and I recommend approval on these abatements.
Do we have to do them separately, or can we do them together? Because they're two separate years.
You can do them together unless you want to discuss them separately.
Make a motion to approve the abatements for parcel 35328.
Second. Motion and a second to approve both, and I know the applicant wanted to be present. I don't know if he is here or if he-
I have not seen him. Melinda did email him with this agenda, and I made two attempts on two separate days and left messages on his machine, so.
Okay, so we've tried to contact him to let him know. I don't think he's going to be disappointed in the motion and seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve, same sign.
Question.
Motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry.
Roll call.
We need a roll call vote, and it says that right here. Go ahead, Olivia.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
And I do have one other quick thing here, just for the commission. Again, I like to share these. We don't get these very often. Our office is one of the offices that don't get many pats in the back from the public, so I've got a letter here, or a card that was sent from the gal Becky Lewis at the Census Bureau to Cassandra, one of my property techs. It just reads, "Thank you so much for your time and courtesy this week upon my call to determine the status of an address in one of your data collection samples. Your enthusiasm and excellent customer care and service was appreciated more than you can imagine. Our job sometimes depends on people such as yourself, proving your expertise. Many thanks." So. Cassandra Junkie, yep, she's one of my gals up front. Again, they do such an excellent job up there with the public, with anybody, with anybody. So I like to share those things when we get them, because it's not very often, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Next agenda item is our notice and requests. We have none, and we're going to move into our planning and zoning notices. I think David is here. Morning, David.
Good morning. Commission David Heinold, County Planning Department. Rezoning 20-03 is to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. This property is located at 25404475th Avenue. It's just south of the South Dakota State Highway 115 and County Highway 122. Just skip forward to the map that shows the location. So similar to last month, the property to the south was just rezoned to commercial. This property encompasses about .4 or 5 acres. The Petitioner Ransom LLC has submitted a petition. The public hearing was held on July 27th, and a map has been provided to you, as well as the minutes from that meeting. Action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County on August 25th at or after 9:00 a.m. at a meeting of Minnehaha County Commission, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for Kevin?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to set the date of hearing for August 25th, 2020. All those in, roll call vote, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Usually you call Karski before you call me, but now he's after me.
Got to pay attention. Petition for Compromisalene, we have none. Now is the opportunity for public comment. I think we have a few people maybe out in the hallway that are here for public comment. We also have Scott Wick from the Fairgrounds. You looking?
Still got a little bit of gas in the tank.
Yeah, a little bit of gas in the tank. There you go.
Good morning. Scott Wick with the WH Land Fairgrounds, Sunfire Fair. Want to give you a brief update on the first three days in. You know, going into this very uncharted waters, and we knew we weren't going to start out setting any attendance records, which is probably good, easing back into this Saturday. It was a respectable day, good weather, you know, much, definitely much slower, so attendance wasn't the best. The carnival did okay. There was no concert Saturday night. Sunday, we definitely saw people, you're seeing more families coming out a little bit earlier and enjoying the rides and the food and everything, and the carnival did much better. So we had the first concert Sunday night, and it was pretty, it was pretty refreshing to see. In the grandstand, people were kind of podding up together, probably with people they hang out with all the time, you know, over the past two, three months, and they were doing some good distancing in the major pit area. We changed that around and took away the North Beverage Station and opened up another 80 feet heading to the north, put some picnic tables out, so people were keeping away from each other. In the immediate pit in front of, in front of the stage, prior to the show, yes, you know, but as the concert started, people were closer together. But like we said, our message has always been, if you feel comfortable coming out there, please, you know, please do it, and we do still provide the concerts. So last night, we had Big &amp; Rich, and yesterday was Half Price Ride, so it was a very good day yesterday. Things went very well. No major problems. We've had a few clusters of some of the teenagers that have done their usual, you know, they'll start running around and doing different things, but nothing real major, but, you know, they've been cooped up for how many months. That's to be expected, so all the law enforcement and sheriffs and Sioux Falls PD did a great job. So, no major things going into it. We've got concerts tonight and also Wednesday. Thursday, we're dark. Friday, we have the ventriloquist Terry Fader, and then two performances of the rodeo on Saturday. The weather's looking pretty good. It looks like it might warm up considerably by Friday and Saturday. Other than that, we're just different every day, just seeing how things, how people move around and what happens.
What time do the gates open up?
Tonight, we start accepting people at 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
We're doing, we're doing 10 to 10, and we don't let anybody in after 10:00 p.m. The people that are there, it's up to the carnival. If it's, if it does well, makes sense for them, then they can, the hard curve is midnight.
Okay. Thanks for coming, Scott, and giving us an update in the middle of the week. I know this isn't a normal, we don't normally do this every year where you come in the middle, but it is nice to see you, and it's nice to hear. I mean, there was a nice article in the Argus Leader, I think, I don't know what day it was, but there was an article I saw. And it's good to see people are ready to get back out and are still being conscious of their safety boundaries.
Yeah, we're seeing, we're getting a lot of really positive comments. You know, as far as people wearing masks, different times of the day, you'll see a larger percentage, and I think a lot more people are coming out earlier to come out when it's slower so they can have, have the opportunity to be around smaller crowds. But we're pretty pleased moving forward, and with our sanitizing and disinfecting and everything, it's, it's going well.
One more comment. Tomorrow is Ag Appreciation Day.
Yes.
And so they will be still feeding their normal pork loin sandwiches. They've changed things a little bit, and one is that you don't need a ticket, just to cut down on that personal contact and stuff, but they will be going forward with it, and if they've spread things out considerably, and I think that'll be another good day to bring out people, and wear your mask if you want.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Scott, do they still have those tasty milkshakes at the Pipestone Building?
They do.
Thank you.
It'll be even more popular as it gets warmer.
Thank you.
I apologize. I have one more question. So I did get a question this, yesterday about, since the fair, since the 4H people are not there, do you have any livestock out there at all? Is, are the barns open, are some of the barns open, or what do you have available for young kids?
That's a great question. I should have brought that up. We had, with 4H not being allowed to operate normally and being under their regulations, we still have our FFA and our open class. So Saturday, we had an open class sheep show that had about 40 head more than usual. We had 90 head of pigs on Sunday, and yesterday, they had the goat show. And we moved those into the center room of the expo building, and they made it, made the show ring real nice, and the woodchips on a backdrop for pictures, and normally, they come and they take their animals and they stall them, and everybody's next to each other all the time, but what we did this time is we, we encouraged them to jump out. So what they do is they, they just show out of their trailer. So the family's together, the animals that are always together are there, and they do everything in their trailer, take them in the ring and show them, then go back to their trailer. So if, everybody's not next to each other in different stalls. And they were allowed to drive into the building, and like I said, it was relatively cool, so things were nice in there, but a lot of positive compliments. We'll probably keep those shows in there because we have those days open there. And then starting tomorrow, we'll have FFA cattle shows and dairy shows out in the open show ring on the west side. So, yeah, we do have livestock. We don't, the horse shows were canceled, all the judges canceled. They didn't feel comfortable flying or driving them, so when they did, when they do that 10 days before the fair, it's hard to get a replacement judge, but I believe the horses will all be back next year. A lot of the things we've implemented this year that have worked well, we're going to continue to do.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Anybody else here for public comment? I thought we had people here from Housit.
They're here for the next item.
For the next item.
Ah, next item, okay. So, moving on to regular business. We have a public hearing to consider 10 special event malt beverage licenses for 212 The Boiling Point. Morning, Olivia.
Good morning. Olivia Larson, the auditor's office. We did receive 10 applications from 212 for events taking place at Housit. Just for a matter of clarification for the record, it was inadvertently listed as KTT instead of KJT on the notice of hearing. According to the state's attorney's office, that doesn't affect the validity of the proceedings, but we just want to make sure we're clear on that. Otherwise, we do have representatives here, and I have not received any concerns or objections from the state's attorney's office, planning and zoning, or sheriff's office.
Olivia, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I am supportive of, obviously, of their events out there, but should there turn out to be issues with, you know, underage drinking and stuff, can we recall, you know, the last four licenses, or once we approve them, do they get to do all 10, no matter what?
I see what you're saying. I've not approached a situation like that. I think I would need to discuss with the state's attorney's office and find out.
It's fine with me. I just know 10 is a lot, and-
Right.
Okay. I'm hoping there's no trouble.
This is a regular business, and we do take public input, so if anybody is in favor of this, please step up, and that would include the applicant.
Come on, you guys.
Do you have anything to say?
Doug Johnson, General Manager, Housit Speedway. One thing to address Jeff's question is that we have tables set up where we do card, and everybody that's purchasing alcohol has to have a over 21 risk band. So we, we had that set up on both ends of the facility on Sunday night, so.
Other questions? Any other, anything to add on the licenses?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you, and opportunity for rebuttal. Anybody here in opposition for us, to us issuing these 10 special permits?
Mr. Chairman, just on a related issue, I wonder how things went Sunday night, and I guess personally, I had a little concern about how close people were together, and I'm sure it was an awakening for some of the neighbors with roaring engines. And why don't we race electric cars?
People like the noise, the fans that come out. No, everything went very well on Sunday night. You know, we, one thing that we're addressing is trying to get done a little bit sooner. We went to, you know, we had fireworks at 11:30 at night, so that, that will get better, you know, as things move along, but everything went well. We had, we did not, we cut our ticket sales off. We can seat 9,000 people in there. We obviously did not sell 9,000 people, or 9,000 tickets. We also opened up our pit area to the fans, so if fans weren't comfortable going in the stands, they had the opportunity, opportunity to take a lawn chair, go sit in the infield, and watch the races from there. So we had maybe a couple hundred people that took advantage of that and did that. So, you know, we temperature-checked everybody that came through the gates. We had one issue, and what we did with them is, is we pulled them off to the side, let them sit there for, under a canopy for about five minutes, rechecked their temperature. They were fine. So they just obviously probably been out in the sun when they come in early, but we temperature-checked all, all the fans that came through the gates, so we had no issues with that. You know, several people were wearing masks. That was their option. We didn't mandate it, but we had several of our employees as well wearing masks, you know, especially the people like at our pit gate that were handling money and stuff like that. Most of them had gloves on as well, so. But we, we really didn't have any issues. I think people had the chance to spread out because we didn't sell to full capacity, so there was plenty of opportunity for people to spread out. If they weren't comfortable sitting by somebody that, you know, sat next to them, so.
Commissioner Bennega?
Could you give me an idea what your projected hours are going to be, because I did have some feedback, and they're not against the racing industry or against Housit. That's not the issue. It's, they're living within a couple, three miles of the facility and-
Yeah.
Had no problem hearing what was going on evidently.
Our, our projected end time moving forward is, our goal is to be done by 10:30 every night, no later. I mean, we had some circumstances Sunday night that prevented that, where we had a couple accidents that took longer to clean up. That stuff is going to happen from time to time, but we're, we're pretty adamant. The track we run at Jackson, we start on time, and, and we're usually done between 10:15 and 10:30, so that's kind of what our goal is out here, too, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and if you don't mind, I'll relay that to the feedback I've had, and I do appreciate your cooperation in frankly changing the vacant facility into a very active, productive entertainment center, so thank you for your investment.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Commissioner Hyburger?
I was just going to echo that. It's nice to see you guys back in business, or see the track back in business, and, and I'm glad that it went off so well this first time around, so I would make a motion to approve, since we've done both.
Before I take a motion there, I didn't really give anybody a chance to oppose. Commissioner Barth hijacked my request. Anybody here in opposition? See anybody in opposition? So now I'll take a-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion to approve is approved unanimously, or something like that. So, thank you, gentlemen. Alrighty. Next, we have authorized the chair to sign an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the 2020 Burn Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG Program Award. Joe Bosman, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. I have before you this morning a request to have the commission sign an inter-local agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for a justice assistance grant. That is a grant that is awarded to the city of Sioux Falls, and we are fortunate enough to be a sub-recipient of this grant with a 65-35 split with the city. The city will take care of all the reporting requirements to the federal government, and we will report then our spending of the $40,489 to the city of Sioux Falls for their reimbursement. Also part of this, I'll be coming back probably in the next week or two. The grant does require a period of public comment, and so we'll be publishing a notice for an opportunity for public comment with a spending plan, which will outline more what we intend to spend our funds, as well as the city of Sioux Falls, to spend our funds on for this grant.
Questions for your captain?
Motion to authorize the chair to sign this agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Next, authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the Department of Social Services and Minnehaha County for detox services. That's going to go to Commissioner Hyburger?
She's on the phone.
Oh. Carrie, you're on the phone. Can you hear us?
I am on the phone. Can you hear me okay?
Here you fine, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, good morning. Carrie Benz from the Human Services Office. So before you this morning is the Purchase Services Agreement for the detox, and it's the agreement between DSS and Minnehaha County in the amount of $42,997. This contract allows detox to bill for a portion of the services that detox provides to those that access the services. The agreement is effective through May 31 of 2021. We obviously have had some discussion with the state, as obviously with the soon-to-be Triage Center, and detox is transferred to that. We'll be having some edits to that agreement, but obviously, that will follow over to the Triage Center. The agreement has been reviewed by the SAO, and all, and all requested changes have been made and agreed upon with the state. They have provided us with the letter identifying that Armor will be our subcontractor to provide the service. So what we're requesting today is the chair to be able to sign the agreement via DocuSign. That's something new. The state is doing- The state is doing digital signing, and so with that, it would be the chair to sign the agreement, and it would allow us to then continue to bill the state for the services that were rendered. If you have any questions, I'm available for those.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve, all those...
Comment, Mr. Chairman?